Okay, I see that it is now ten o'clock. I will call this Thursday, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Board of Equalization Special Meeting, order. Start with a row call. Brett Towne.
Here.
Alan Lord Thompson.
Present.
And I'm Patrick Crowley, the Chairman of the Board. So we have a full board here today. We have three properties in front of the board. And we'll start with the first one, which is BOE number forty. Deborah Navarre Vol Trust. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm Donald D. Navard.
Okay, Donald.
Also trustee and lucky enough to be married to the Deborah Navard.
Gotcha, okay.
This is a twenty-five-hundred-and-eighty-one square foot condominium as part of the Commons. Commons is a development located in Oklahoma City. Just for a lot of PR purposes, a lot of people say, well, you live in Nichols Hills. That's not true. This is Oklahoma City. This is a shared condominium complex. There are thirty-one units, twenty, seven of them are single-family homes. The others are all shared wall units, and they range in various sizes. Ours is one of ten units that are twenty-five-hundred-and-eighty-one square feet.
Are they shared wall?
Yes. The average assessed value in twenty-twenty-two, twelve-thirty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, was four-hundred-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-four dollars and sixty cents. Those were all the twenty-five-eighty-one square foot units. There are two units that are currently for sale. The one directly next to us, which is unit sixteen, which is a slightly smaller, has been on the market now for ten months and has not been sold. And very candidly, the reason is that it needs to be updated. These units are old. They were built in the seventies by the Dufner Group. And they have shared gas and shared water. We have one water meter for the shared units and one gas meter for the shared units. The only two sales that have triggered this increase are, one, to a condominium unit that was vacant for a long while. People came in and remodeled it. And unfortunately, due to timing, upon the death of our manager, a guy named John Marshall, had cancer and passed away. These people came in and bought the unit, remodeled it, and put in gas, which was not permitted, and built a pergola, which was not permitted, and did other construction things, which was not permitted, but there was no one to supervise. No one said no. And so it got done. And as a result, that was the high-dollar unit that was sold during the time when everybody's units, when the prices around the city, as we all know, got crazy. And it got bought out of, way out of, out of line. So if you looked at the, again, the assessed values averaged for twelve-thirty-one, twenty-two, which just last year, for all our size units, it was four-hundred-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-ninety-four dollars and sixty cents. And we think that that's, that's probably pretty close. It's probably gone up a little bit, but I don't think it certainly has not gone up to the six-hundred-ninety-two thousand, which is what my, I mean, it's been assessed. It's not been remodeled. It doesn't have all those additional benefits that the one model that sold for so much bought. And then another unit, the only other unit that was sold, and the gentleman's here is the neighbor across the way, bought a remodeled unit that flipped twice before he bought it. So it had been remodeled twice. So in terms of what we think the value of our unit is, it's, it's probably close to four-hundred-nine-thousand. I said five-hundred-thousand in my, in my appeal without really doing the homework, which I've done now. And that's the reason I'm here today is because I've done the homework. And the, I don't see the justification for the, for the six-hundred-ninety-two thousand. So I'm sure me ask, answer any questions.
Do you have two common walls?
No, we, no, we have one common wall. We're on, we're on the one, you come in the drive, it's the first one on the right. So we have the traffic that comes in, and we're, that one, put the.
So you're on hand?
Yeah, just if you go up, no, up the other way. That, to the far left, right there.
Oh, I hear.
That's, no, that's a single family.
Oh, you mean that we're on the right?
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, sir, right here. These are all single-family, single units. They have their own water, their own gas, own electricity, everybody. This is one, so when the drive comes in, this is the one, this is the one that's for sale, and we have the common wall here that hasn't sold in ten months, and they've lowered the price three times. And the other unit that had the pergola is down here.
With one wall, one common wall?
Yes, on the end.
Are the ones that have two common walls worth less, in your opinion, than the ones that have one common wall?
On square footage, there, no, I don't think so. This is, it was well-built.
You know, I'm, I live in DC, so I understand semi-detached.
Yeah.
Versus row houses.
Yeah.
And the ones in the middle have two walls.
Common walls.
So.
They have common walls, but the way this was designed, the common walls are the garages. They really don't have any residential, living common walls.
Okay.
So the other side of your common wall is a garage?
Yeah, the garage.
Okay.
Yeah, so the lady's garage next to us, the student's garage. She passed away about a year ago, and, and they just haven't been remodeled. And the reason is it hadn't been remodeled. She'd been there twenty-five years, and she's never been remodeled, and it's just, no one's gonna buy it.
The one in the middle has a garage, a garage?
Yes.
Okay, now, explain something to me here. You say you have common gas, there with my eyes, and common water.
Yes, sir.
How do you determine?
Well, it's split by the number of units. Just, it's not based on usage. There's no way to have an individual meter on everybody's house, so we pay, you know, a condo management fee every month for the condo common area charges. And included in the common area charges are going to be gas and water.
Okay.
And for that reason, none of the units are allowed to have gas appliances, because I would be paying, because mine is electric, I would be paying for his gas appliances if he's got it. And that, that's not the deal. That's not the rules of the condominium association. So it's pretty restrictive that way.
So your heat is gas?
Electric.
Okay, what's gas?
When it was built, you have a fireplace and an outdoor gas grill, if you want it. Those are the only gas items.
Okay.
And that was why they designed it back then, I don't know, but that's what they did. But again, the other units to the, to the east, I mean, to the west, are all single-family, and they'd have their own gas, their own electrical, and their own water.
Which the pergola now has.
Yes, and he, again, that was done without anybody's permission. Had that been done today, in fact, our booklet that they give out to all the owners say, you can't, you can't do that.
Okay. But they didn't, they did anyway.
And they did because Mr. Marshall, who had just passed away, was our manager, and no one thought about going down and checking on him.
Okay.
Now, can you see that, that just the pergola being the difference in two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars?
No, but they completely gutted the place and redid it.
So it's been completely remodeled?
Completely remodeled, including, including gas appliances.
Has your home been remodeled?
Not for a long while.
When did you buy it?
About six years ago.
Thirteen?
July of fifteen, or January of two thousand fifteen, fifteen, okay.
For four-hundred-and-twenty thousand?
Yes.
So you wanna be, you wanna be less?
Do I wanna buy what?
You wanna, you wanna say you're worth less than you paid for it?
No, that's why I said five-hundred-thousand originally.
My, I'm not showing that on my paper. My paper shows you're asking four-hundred-nine-seven-nine-four.
You're unsure it's five-hundred-thousand?
Yeah. You got, yeah, somehow got, paper got messed up.
Okay. Flat five.
Yeah, I just took an easy number, because I, I thought that's what, that's what it would be, worth.
Anything else you'd like to know about?
I think that gets it. You've got my pro question, and I appreciate you guys listening to me.
Have you been for the board before?
Yes, sir, but not for residential purposes.
Okay, well, just.
For, for commercial purposes, so the answer is no.
Let you know how we operate here, we're pretty informal, although we have following statutes. We're gonna hear from you first, and if you have nothing else, whether we're gonna hear from the assessor, and after that, you can respond to what the assessor says, okay?
Perfect.
So we have twenty-twenty-two sales to support the current value, and a couple of the properties that we're using to support the current value have significant remodels on them. And because of that, and because of, you know, you know, the, you know, what they sold for, we have to use those to support the current value of not just his property, but a lot of the properties that are in that neighborhood. And we come up with a, a meeting was right around six-ninety, so we have, we kept it on at six-ninety-two-five, and we just can't justify having anything going lower below that based on the information we've provided in the informal.
Okay, anything else?
Did it adjust down, did the formula adjust down on their properties because they haven't been remodeled or anything?
Well, no, we've, we're showing that there's been an increase because of the remodeled properties, so yeah.
But the ones that haven't been remodeled, that are in the same state they were seven, ten years ago?
I mean, some of the values have increased from what we've looked at, just from some of the other comps, but they've increased a little bit in value, so, but a lot of these other properties that have been remodeled are driving everybody up.
The one on your comps, comp number two, that's at four-hundred-and-seventy-five, all of these are in the same area?
Yes.
Same block? So the one that's at four-eighty-one, three-twenty-six is significantly lower than what it seems the other properties are?
Right.
Why is that?
That's just where we currently have them valued at, and they haven't had any work done on their property, and it could just be based on where they've been valued at. They could have had the property for, or that's just where we currently have it at, and it was a valid arms-length transaction purchase, and we're also adjusting for the time trend as well, which is another thing that's driving these values.
And a little bit smaller square footage.
Right. But it's still, we still have to use, still use it to, kind of, as we try to use as many sales as we can to support our value, so.
Well, Mr. Navard says that his has not been remodeled. Is that accurate?
It was remodeled, but it's been back, it was back in two thousand and five, and, which does change the effective year built on the property, so it's not a recent remodel, but it's, it does change the year built, the effective year built in our formula. So it is, it is slightly newer than the original year built, but it hasn't been remodeled as of recently.
Okay. Anything else?
Are you east of May?
We're just east of May.
Here's the map.
East of May and north on Grand Boulevard is right sort of catty corner from the Starbucks and the shopping center where Paper and Moore is, if you know that, it's on in the corner of May and Grant.
I'm just, I'm, I'm suffering through Wilshire and Grant.
No, you're one block north.
Okay.
Wilshire is one block north from Grant.
Got it.
Yeah, if it stood, stood in your yard and threw a rock, you'd hit Nichols Hills, am I correct?
Well, it'd be a long throw.
And Greystone's the.
Yeah, Greystone.
Right there.
Yeah, Greystone, so it's a good quarter mile.
Okay.
Everybody thinks May is the boundary.
May is.
In, in their mind.
Yeah, May.
They all consider that.
We're at Nichols Hills. Yeah, we, we walk to, I mean, easy, you know, three-minute walk to, to Starbucks.
Are you allowed to have a pickup in here?
No.
Really?
No.
Okay.
It's, and, and another problem is that the way it was designed years ago, of course, it is not vehicle-friendly. It doesn't have parking, doesn't have any parking, doesn't have a play area, doesn't have all the attributes of what would be done if you're gonna build something like that today. You've got to put in the workout room and all that. We've got a two-story office building and an old pool that is not functional. It's functional, I take it back, I, but it's not proof. And, and so that's, you know, we're dealing with those things as an owner in terms of assessments and things like that. But I just, I, I, I just, I, I just don't think the mass increase in our properties. A question for you, sir, is how many properties have you increased in the Commons as a result of those two parcels?
I don't have that, I don't have those, that information, because I'd have to dissect every one of those properties, but I only look at what the comps provided, and that's what I've got right here.
Because I think you're gonna have other protests as well. For instance, a lady that's got her, gonna be coming to you, had her, is in her mother's, and she hadn't done anything to it probably thirty years, and they increased hers accordingly. So.
So you happily take five-hundred-thousand five?
I think that's, I think that's fair. I think that's.
You certainly wouldn't refuse six-ninety-two.
No, I think that's a little, that's just based on completely remodeled with attributes that mine doesn't have.
You'd refuse it?
Huh?
You'd refuse six-ninety-two?
Oh, somebody gave me six-ninety-two? Yeah, probably, because I, I moved out of the house to get away from yard work and all that stuff, and I don't, I don't wanna do that anymore. So the answer is I like where I am, it's convenient, I still work full-time, and, you know, I'm not ready for retirement yet, but I, so it's easy for me to get to, centrally located, and I can get to, my wife and I can get around, there are restaurants in the area we can walk to. So it was, very honestly, when, when she found this place, it was not with my permission, it wasn't with my voluntary consent. I didn't wanna move out of the house. I liked a big yard and doing yard work and all that. We don't have that now, but it, I've grown to get accustomed to it.
Anything else you'd like to?
No, sir, thank you, appreciate your here for it.
All right.
So what's the process now?
All right, what, what we'll do is on Friday, they'll be a letter go out, let you know what the decision of the board is on the market value of your home.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Appreciate it.
And then you'll get it, you'll get it Saturday or Monday, however, you know, whatever.
I appreciate just the opportunity to come down and let you know. Thanks.
Thank you, sir, you're a good presentation. Excuse me. All right, I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE number forty, open up hearing on BOE number twenty-five, which is twenty-eight-twenty-five Northwest Grand Boulevard, number twenty-one. And Robert Balling?
Yes, sir.
Okay, have a seat there.
Thank you very much.
How's, how's it going? Have you been before the board before?
No, I have not. This is my first time, and I thank you very much for allowing me to come visit with you today.
Well.
My.
We have to do it by statute, simply.
Well, thank you anyway. Thank you for your service.
We'll, we'll hear, we'll hear the, what you wanna know, what to know about your property.
Thank you very much. And I, I have some copies of some, some things here I'd like to distribute to you just so that you'll have copies of what I'm gonna talk to you about, and for your convenience, following along with my, with my argument.
Okay, before we get started here, was this information that was presented at the informal hearing?
It was, in fact, sir, and it was also attached to my application for this hearing.
Okay.
And I also gave a copy to the assessor's office, so they'd be aware of this protest and what my arguments were in advance of this hearing today.
Yeah, what I'm asking you, it's a good grief, what I'm asking you is if, if this information was presented to the assessor at the informal hearing, not after.
Okay. When, when I had my informal hearing, I had requested initially to meet in person, simply because it's harder to say no to someone across the table than it is on the phone. What I got was a phone call from the assessor's office, and when I mentioned the informal hearing in person, the person on the phone said, well, you know, you can do that, but we're, we can handle your request right now on the phone. And he said, the result is gonna be the result, whether you come to the office or whether you allow us to perform this service over the phone. And I visited at length with this individual, not about all of these arguments, but about the general arguments that at the time I knew. And basically, he told me that all he could do for me, or all anyone in the office at his level could do for me, is reduce the fair market value of my property from the seven-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand-five-hundred-dollar mark to six-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, which is what I actually paid for the property. I bought the property exactly one year ago tomorrow. Of course, I was under contract late January, early February for that purpose, for the purchase of the property, closing on the thirty-first of March last year. And what I'd like to talk to you about is.
Before we go any further.
Yes, sir.
You purchased the property in March of twenty-twenty-two for six-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And I guess the short answer to is, was this presented at the informal is no?
That's correct.
So I, I've got to, I've got to ask the assessor, have you had an opportunity to look over this?
I have not, no.
So we have it in our package?
I understand that, but if it had not been presented to, was not presented to the assessor at the informal hearing, we don't have jurisdiction to hear evidence it wasn't presented there. This is an appeal.
I'm sorry, no, this, yeah, this was presented to us during the informal appeal, yes.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, yes.
All right.
Thank you, I was worried that I'd wasted my time during that.
Yeah, this was, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, that information was presented to us, yes.
So you've had an opportunity to look it over?
Yes, I've looked it all.
Okay, that was my question, how did you get in our package if it wasn't?
Sorry.
Yeah, and was this presented at the informal?
Yes, it was, it was presented to our appraiser who did the, yes.
All right, that's all I need to know.
I know I talked to them for quite a while, and I had many of these arguments already prepared.
Okay.
And I don't know if I've made any changes to them, but I did provide a copy of my presentation today to the assessors as well as to this board.
Okay, all right.
So you, you heard the previous case?
I did, my neighbor down the bar.
So tell me, so what kind of unit do you have? You have a freestanding or?
No, I have a unit that is shares one common wall.
Okay.
And it is directly across from Mr. Navard's unit.
Okay.
So if we look at the map, I can show you that this is the entry into the Commons. This is Mr. Navard's unit, and this is my unit. Okay?
Is that a swimming pool?
That is the common pool for the entire complex, and I'm luckily right next door to it, so I could drown at any moment. That's either lucky or unlucky, however you wanna look at it. I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself and my circumstance, and hopefully, this may be meaningful to you or it may not, but it'll be good for me to let you know.
Okay.
I'm retired. My wife, Deborah, and I have been married for fifty-three years.
Oh, for that.
We are seventy-four years old this year.
Oh, wow.
And I'm a Vietnam-era veteran. I lived at Lake Tenkiller after I retired, and I had a large home there with a lot of acreage and a lot of work for me that I'm no longer able to do. And I sold that property at what I believe was probably the very height of the seller's market that we've had here in the state of Oklahoma and elsewhere in the nation during the COVID pandemic and during especially twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-two. What, once I put my home on the market, it sold very quickly. It was one of those situations where I had multiple offers within a day of my home being on the market, and I sold at what I think is a ridiculously high price, and I benefited from that sale. When I came then to Oklahoma City.
What did you sell it for?
Pardon me?
What did you sell it for?
Eight-hundred-thousand dollars.
Okay, good job.
When I looked in Oklahoma City, the, my wife and I knew that we wanted a condominium because we're not as able to manage property and yards and gardens and things of that nature as we have been in the past. The inventory of condominiums, which we made that decision to be, to be condominium owners based on our ability to take care of things and our desire to do that, the inventory of condominiums was very low. We looked at condominiums at Waterford, and we looked at this condominium, unit twenty-one at the Commons. The Commons, as Mr. Navard has so eloquently explained, is a small community that's comprised of both condominiums and townhouses and versus the Waterford, which is, I think, a hundred and twenty units of condominiums at the Waterford. My wife fell in love with the place, the location and everything immediately, and I began to negotiate my, the best price I could negotiate to acquire this property. It had been remodeled, but as you're probably aware, condominium owners, and at the Commons in particular, condominium owners own a percentage of the total condominium, of the total complex, and that is a derivative of the total square feet of their unit. In the instance of Mr. Navard and myself, we own three and about a quarter percent of the total property, the land, all of the buildings, all of the accoutrements, the gates, the security gates, the lighting, the parking areas, the pool, the town, the clubhouse, and everything. That, in my opinion, is the majority of our equity. So in that instance, every unit that is the size of mine and Mr. Navard's share a commonality in that we all own exactly the same percentage of the Commons condominium complex. The second thing, and I know that in, I can, I can list this, share with you this list. These ten units that I've listed, these are all type E units. All of them are twenty-five-hundred-and-eighty-one square feet, and they all have an exact floor plan that's exactly alike.
They all have a shared wall?
They all have at least, yes, they all have at least one. They all have at least, yes, they all have at least one shared wall. I, I offered this floor plan as part of my, uh, materials today. And this is the floor plan that is consistent with all E units at the commons. And it's a total of twenty-five hundred and eighty-one square feet. It is a two-bedroom, two-bath unit, which many of the other units at the commons are three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units. And in the view of many, the three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units would be more desirable. So I just wanted to point that out before I continue. When we purchased our unit at, uh, the commons, we had had a nice windfall for the sale of our property at Lake Tenkiller. And the price, although it was to us very high for what we were stepping into, uh, you know, it didn't seem like that big of a stretch for us since we had had a good windfall selling our property. The initial asking price for my property was seven hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And I was able to negotiate to six eighty-nine, which I was very proud of that because at the time, people were not only able to negotiate lowering the sale price of most property, but there were usually half a dozen people in line to buy it if you didn't for the asking price. Obviously, that wasn't the case with respect to my unit, or I wouldn't have been able to make that negotiated price. The county assessor by law maintains the taxable fair cash values of all the properties that are-
Let me stop you right there, we don't have anything to do with the taxable value of anything. We only look at the fair market value of property.
Okay, I get, I'm confused because on the, uh, assessor's notice about the increase, it specifically lists a taxable fair cash value, not fair market value.
I understand.
Okay.
But we don't have jurisdiction to hear anything about taxes. We only, we only look at what is the fair market value of a piece of property. And I'll tell you at the get-go, the most compelling evidence to determine that is what a willing buyer would pay a willing seller. In this particular case, that figure is six hundred and eighty-nine thousand at the March of- twenty twenty-two. We only look at the fair market value of the property on January first of this year. So we got about eight months between when you purchased the property and when we need to set the fair market value. And in that eight months, I guess it could be argued, the value of that property, like everything else, went up.
I would argue-
But the assessor is at six hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
I would argue that property value has gone down in the last ten months.
Uh, well, the last ten months doesn't matter, it's January first, that's it, that's a bright line cutoff.
From, I, I guess my argument is that from the time I purchased the property at the end of, uh, March in twenty twenty-two until January first and at, and on January first, twenty twenty-three, that property is worth significantly less than it was when I purchased it. And I'll also admit-
Why?
That I overpaid.
Yeah, I know, tell, tell me why it's worth less.
Well, it's historically true in the state of Oklahoma and across the nation that property values have been on the decline since February of twenty twenty-two and have consistently declined over the months following those months. And I can give you evidence of that with respect to the property that I sold in Cherokee County, Oklahoma. I wouldn't have that evidence for Oklahoma County. But the property that I sold for eight hundred thousand dollars in, uh, January, I went into contract January of twenty twenty-two, today is valued by Zillow at five hundred and fifteen thousand. Now, I know Zillow is not the ultimate authority on valuations, but they do publish what they call a Zillow estimate. The Zillow estimate, when I sold that property in February of, uh, twenty twenty-two, was seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, and I was able to sell for seven ninety-nine nine ninety-nine. Nonetheless, each month since then, that property value according to Zillow and according to Redfin and according to Realtor.com has diminished to now five hundred and fifteen thousand.
Did you look to see what the county over there valued it at, at January one?
No, I wouldn't have ac, I wouldn't have access to that information.
So-
Since I don't own that property any longer.
So just to compare apples to apples, would the most accurate comparisons be sales within your condominium complex?
No, they really wouldn't, even though there have been sales within our condominium complex. Mr. Navarre spoke of unit number ten, the unit that, uh, is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath unit with gas cooktop, gas hot water heater and a pergola out back that was totally remodeled, uh, before it was sold by a person that's a decorator. And I think they did a beautiful job, I've seen the condo. Uh, again, I think they overpaid for the condo as well.
Well, well, was it?
But they were under, I'm sure they were under contract well in advance of their closing, yes, ma'am.
What did it sell for?
Uh, I believe it sold for seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
When was your, do you know when your condo was remodeled?
My condo was remodeled by the people I purchased it from, a company called Hickory Lane. And they purchased properties specifically to remodel, flip them. One of the interesting aspects of the price I paid to those folks is it not only reflected the remodel cost, but in the eighteen or twenty months that they owned that property, they had to make homeowner association dues payments as well, which are sizable in our area, around six hundred and forty dollars a month. So they had a significant investment that they could only recoup by selling the property at a higher price than just the remodel value. So I did want to mention that, and that is not included in my arguments here.
So I guess what you're saying is it was, it was remodeled immediately before you took possession?
Yes, it was, it was. Um, I'd like to say that, uh, I, I am not, uh, the least bit hesitant to say that I overpaid. And just as I would not be the least bit hesitant to say the buyer that purchased my house overpaid. But that's a one-time situation where taxes is an annual recurring punishment. And frankly, doubling, more than doubling, the taxable, uh, the tax burden.
Again, I'll stop you, we don't, we don't have anything to do with taxes. We only set the fair market value of property.
I think that's why we're here today, is to establish that the fair market value that's been assessed is wrong. And that's why I'm here, to argue that that's a wrong value.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
I've already been able to establish with the assessor's office that they were wrong when they said my fair market value was seven hundred and fifty-three thousand five hundred dollars.
And they came down to six eighty-nine.
And they took it down to six eighty-nine, which is what I paid.
Which turns out to be the purchase price.
That is the purchase price.
Okay.
Okay. So unlike a one-time error of overpaying for property, um, I'm, if I don't get some relief on this, from this board, I'll be, uh, forever, uh, paying a annual penalty that I really can't afford. There's a, something that I'd like to speak to is about the comparables that were used-
Okay.
In the, uh, evaluation of my property by the assessor's office.
Okay.
So if I could, I would, uh, these pages that are at, near the back of your packet that I provided you have the three properties that were used in the assessment of the fair market value by the county assessor of my property.
Yep, we have that.
And the very first, the very first comparable, comparable number one, had a sale price of five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Comparable number two, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And that is the unit that Mr. Navarre spoke of and that I've spoken about that has the gas and the pergola and the remodel. And then finally, comparable number three, that has a sale price of four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And it adjusts, uh, and, so those are the three properties we're talking about. Comparable number one, I believe is unit, uh, see comparable number two, I'm sorry, comparable number two is unit number ten at the commons. And that's the one that we've spoken about, Mr. Navarre has spoken about, that was remodeled, has access to the gas and, uh, other amenities that are not afforded other unit owners.
On the documents I have, I show-
Seven eighty?
Unit ten is comp number three.
Okay.
And, uh, number two was unit nineteen.
We are, uh, we're looking at different, uh, documents, sir.
I imagine so.
Yes.
I'm looking at the thing that the assessor's office gave me, am I looking at-
Comp number two is unit ten, comp number three is, uh, unit nineteen, and we do not have a unit number classified for comp number one.
There was some, there are, there were some mistakes with respect to, uh, the mail that I've received regarding this hearing, that I had the wrong unit number on the letter that was addressed to me from the assessor's office about this hearing. So you may be looking at a different, uh, group of comps.
No, ten- I think the numbers all come out the same.
Ten is seven eighty, seven hundred and eighty thousand.
That's comp number two, right. Um, I'd like to, uh, address both comp number, uh, two and comp number three. Those are both units within the commons that, uh, are three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units. And I hope you can appreciate that for most people, that would be a desirable configuration, particularly for family people and people that had frequent guests. And a three-bedroom unit typically is a more desirable unit. For my wife and I, the two-bedroom unit is desirable because the master bedroom's downstairs. We don't have frequent guests, and, uh, we make frequent trips to Dallas because my wife has health issues. One of the reasons that we moved to Oklahoma City was to address being closer to Dallas and her medical care that she gets monthly at Scott White Clinic at the University of, uh, Baylor. Um, so my arguments would be that comp number two and comp number three are both condos within the commons, but both of which are three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath comparables. And comparable number two particularly is, the price was excessive for that unit, but somewhat, um, okay because of the extra amenities that it has that other units can't have within the commons. Comparable number three at four seventy-five is probably, uh, more comparable to what I feel like our condos were, but once again, it's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath unit with a floor plan. And I've provided copies of the floor plan for that style unit.
Yeah, we have it.
You have that, sir?
Yeah.
Um, let me, I wrote you, how is it that ten, which is the three-bedroom, is twenty-one, twenty square feet and yours is twenty-five eighty-one?
My unit's larger in square footage, but it only is two bedrooms.
I see.
And two baths.
Okay.
Anything else you want to tell us about the piece of property?
I'm sorry?
Is there anything else you want to tell us about your property?
Yes, sir, there is. In looking at, uh, the historical data for assessments and fair market values, as Mr. Navarre stated, the average value at a unit that's configured and has a floor plan and twenty-five hundred and eighty-one square feet and has equity in the form of three-and-a-half percent interest in the total unit complex of the commons. Those units share a four hundred and nine thousand dollar fair market value with respect to the assessor's data as of twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-two. I'm gonna lay my soul bare and tell you that I overpaid for my unit, I wish I hadn't. But it was a one-time error on my part. I can't believe that the people that bought unit ten are having the same remorse that I have for paying too much. But I do, I will tell you that if I had a buyer for six eighty-nine today, that house would be some, belong to someone else. I am, uh, uh-
Let me, the one that Mr. Navarre said has been on the market for almost a year, what is it, what is the asking price for it?
I think it was four eighty-nine, is that right, Don?
Which one?
The one that's been on the market for ten months.
Always been reduced now, I think it's in the four seventy-five or four eighty now, it's, it's come down from five something. It's, uh-
Is it same size as you guys'?
It is right next to mine, six, unit sixteen.
It's a three-bedroom unit also.
But, yeah, and, and the reason very honestly is it, the lady who's been there was there for twenty-five thirty, we've just not been remodeling, you know, it's been-
Sorry.
So in all, in all earnestly, uh, my wife and I are on a fixed income, we're retired. We purchased this property, paid too much for it, in my opinion. And I'm, you know, I'm hoping that, uh, you'll have some, uh, understanding of our angst and, uh-
And where do you want us to evaluate it?
I didn't list evaluation on my, uh, application to you, but I would hope, you know, to be, you know, between four hundred and nine thousand and five hundred thousand.
I show four oh nine seven ninety-four. Is that not what you put on your appellate?
Well, I, I think I have a copy of that, and I left that blank with just a, uh, oh, I did, in fact, put that on there, yes, sir. And that's the average price, fair market value of those ten units at the commons that all have twenty-five eighty-one square feet and on three point two four percent of the total property.
Whether it's an average price or not, this is what you want. Four oh nine seven ninety-four.
I'd be happy with anything less than what I'm saddled with. And, uh, I beg your pardon, uh, and I appreciate your listening to my, uh, complaints.
Sure.
And appeal, thank you again for your time today and-
Well, you're going to get an opportunity to respond to the assessor.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
All right, so-
Go ahead.
So the original asking, uh, request is three ninety-one oh four nine. That was at the informal appeal. And I want to also bring up the MLS listing. We have access to when it was for, when it was sold, says that everything is, everything is brand new. And this is one of the main things that is driving that value up. The listing price was seven forty-nine. We originally had the value on- We originally had the value on it seven fif- or seven fifty-three and we did lower it to the purchase price. I was going to get you down to some of the pictures.
I show your original price was seven fifty-three, five hundred, and you lowered it to six eighty-nine even, is that correct?
Correct, the purchase price, yes. And if I'm going too fast, just let me know.
No, that's good. How'd you get those empty?
Pardon?
How'd you get those pictures empty?
This, whoever, uh, was in charge of staging the place, they, uh, they take the pictures, they do a really good job of doing that. And then anytime there's a pro- uh, property for sale, we find it on the internet and that's, that's what we'll do. We'll copy the information. But that's kind of, and like you, like you know, like it's been said before, willing buyer, willing seller. And whether it was an error or not, we have to go by what the willing buyer, willing seller is and their setting the market value and, and then of course, you know, other properties where we're reflecting what the new value's going to be based on that, remodels, similar properties and, and all that. And then anytime there's like a, um, difference in like a characteristic or bedrooms or bathrooms, we're gonna make adjustments for all that. So we account for everything to get it just like the subject. That's pretty much the...
You have the idea?
Yep, right. Yeah, of course, you know, the owner purchased the property after it was fully remodeled. Um, and the comp set we use, and like you said, we're gonna make adjustments for everything. The median value we originally came up with with these three comps was eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Like I said, we lowered it down to the purchase price because we thought that it was fair. And, you know, with the, the market trend with every property also plays into account. And, um, unit ten is smaller, we do make the adjustments for that. It did sell for seven hundred and eighty thousand because it was remodeled. And if you take the adjustments and the time adjusted value, we come down to eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. And like with all these properties, you gotta account for the time trend and the time trend. And the remodels are all having a ba- a major impact on, on his property and other properties in the area. And we're only going to use properties in that condominium complex to support the value.
Well, his property had been remodeled, it looks like, yeah.
Exactly, correct.
For both of you, it is, what is the, do you hear, see, feel the traffic to the pool? And is that a plus or a minus?
Well, the pool is not used, uh, frequently, but it's typically used by grandchildren. And it's a little bit of a noise issue, but I wouldn't complain about it. But it is situated where it is. And the pool is visible from my front door. So, you know, there is a, a little issue there, but it's not one that, you know, I would call it a deal breaker. But, uh, thanks for asking about that.
Any other from the assessor then?
No, I got nothing else and...
Did you have a question for the assessor?
I just asked them both if was, if it was a factor at all.
What? Any hard one? Comp by that, wouldn't it, or comp by it?
Okay, is that it?
That is it, yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Walling, will you hear a response to what the assessor has said?
Yes, and, uh, very happy to do that. Uh, again, I'd like to, um, refer to equity in the property. Is mainly the three-and-a-quarter percent of ownership in the entire complex of condominiums and townhouses. That's the main value in equity of the buildings and all of the property. So the remodel, although it's very nice to have a remodeled, refreshed property, you know, how much money can you possibly spend remodeling twenty-five hundred square feet? I mean, I can't imagine it being more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, uh, even if you added a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the previous assessed fair market value, we'd be well under the five hundred thousand dollar limit and closer to the four hundred and nine thousand dollar limit that I've mentioned. So, uh, not really buying that argument, that remodel makes that big a difference.
Okay. Are you in any doubt?
I thank you very much and no, I don't have anything else.
All right. Uh, we'll let her go out Friday on what our decision is of the board's going to be. And, uh, you should get it Saturday or Monday, depending on your mail service.
Well, thank you very much.
You bet.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, Mr. Jimmy.
Good presentation.
Yeah, Pat, when, I think when, when we say that, we, we have to meet in a, uh, meeting tomorrow. We just don't do this arbitrarily or get together without, we actually meet as a board and then we'll make that decision.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, what, what happens is we'll see if we agree or if we have a dispute.
Well...
Takes two of us to, uh, reach a conclusion.
Well, thank you very much for your patience and time and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to close the hearing on bill twenty-five. And the last one on the docket is BOE number forty-one, which is property at one hundred and seventy-eighth and Chalk Town Road. Uh, grant of joy be most, I show according to the documents that we have an agreement of a hundred and four thousand on the value. Is that, am I right?
That's absolutely correct, uh, we paid that for the...
Assessor, is that right?
That is correct.
Hundred and four thousand is what you reached and a hundred and four thou- there goes my eyes again. Uh, a hundred and four thousand is what you folks... Okay, well, we have an agreement then on the va- the market value, which is the only thing we decide here. So, uh, with, with an agreement that you're telling me that's what you agreed to, I'm going to ask the board for motion on that agreement.
I, uh, move that we set the value of BOE number forty-one at a hundred and four thousand dollars by agreement of the parties.
Had a question before, I...
Sure.
So I think what the issue is, is basically classification.
Yeah.
So we don't, but we don't have, we don't know if we have a way over, I've looked at statutes, it doesn't say, it's silent.
Yeah, we don't have jurisdiction over it.
I, Gretchen Crawford, General Counsel for County Assessor.
Oh, yeah, this is Gretchen Crawford, from the DA's office.
No, I'm no longer with the DA's office.
Oh, really?
No, no, so I represent the county assessor.
Ah, okay.
So this is the position of the county assessor. So, um, I looked it up.
Are you, are you a county employee?
I don't have, oh. Um, I looked it up...
Can we make a record of this?
It's on the...
It's on the records, but everything's on the record.
For the benefit of the county assessor. And there is an AG's opinion, which says the Board of Equalization does indeed have jurisdiction to, uh, my arms aren't that long. To, uh, I just want...
Thank you.
Here it is, is to use classification.
Okay, pick it up.
And so I highlighted that paragraph. And then as well, just for the benefit of the board, I, uh, also included a copy of the definitions of the use category, which includes subcategories of agricultural, residential, commercial slash industrial. So that there are three use categories and use, property in Oklahoma is valued by use. And so that's the first determination the county assessor makes, was the use and then the perceived value. So the attorney general concluded that yes, the BOE does have jurisdiction to do that particular issue.
I, I, I see that, but it's a nineteen eighty opinion, I just wonder, have the statutes changed?
No.
Okay. All right.
So I guess we feel, think you're confident in that, yeah.
And there's also, uh, a lawsuit, is there?
Sure.
There was also an appeal, um, not out of Oklahoma County, but out of Tulsa County from a use classification from the Board of Equalization to District Court. And that was a twenty fourteen decision. Now, the jurisdictional issue was not raised, it was all, you know, whether the use categor- characterization was correct or not. But, it's there.
So what, where I'm going to go with this at some point is that we not make a decision, but we seek our own counsel, which we can, uh, we have to request that through the, uh, District Attorney's Office, I believe, is that correct?
Yeah, well...
Yes, yeah, there is a form where the clerkship of the board on behalf of the Board of Equalization can request that. So if you want to vote to request that, we can fill that out today.
Well, before we do, I'm going to point out that Gretchen worked at the DA's office and was deciding these issues she, you know, uh, twenty, twenty-five years?
But she represents the assessor's office and not this board.
That's correct.
Right, well, yeah, she was not, you know...
And it, you know, probably will get the same opinion, but...
I, I, I think it's a good, um, good idea, but yes, what do you want to do?
Could we send it to the DA? Could we, but if we do that, do we want to hear today? And, and I know this is probably putting a little bit burdensome on you, but I'm, I want to get it right. Because we, from what I'm understanding, this board has not dealt with this before. I'm, I'm new on the board, but just hearing what other board members, just, I'm just getting the feeling they never made a classification change before. And Pat, you've been on this for a long time.
Yeah, and this is the first time this issue's come up. And, and of course, what I'm at the law set is what standard of review do we have? What evidence is admissible for what we are here for? Because the statute really says we have jurisdiction for the market value of property. Now, the market value of property might, might encompass the question of whether or not it's agriculture or residential.
I will let my clerk rest that, because that's a valuation issue.
Can you please rephrase the question again so I answer you correctly?
I don't know what standard of review we have, what evidence is admissible. In other words, to determine whether it's agricultural or residential and what's, what's the burden to prove or anything else? Because we know exactly what all that is to determine the market value.
So I would say anything, sorry, I'm Steve, I work for the assessor's office. I would say anything that was provided during the appeal to the assessor's office, right?
I mean, I'm sorry, are you asking for actual evidence or, or more clarification as to the three uses? Or how does that affect the value, how does use affect the valuation? I, I, I don't understand that question, I think.
Well, I, it, because I don't understand the issue, I guess. The, the issues come before, it says, I understand it, is whether or not this property is classified correctly.
Correct.
Uh, and wh- what's the standard of review to determine that? Do we, like, in the market value, do we accept the assessor's conclusion on that? Or do we look at, from an even Steven thing, what's the evidence?
It, it, it seems that there's no, there's no disagreement on the value. Owner says it's this...
The value is what we paid for it. We can't really argue that point.
Assessor says this point. So it really is, it's the classification determination.
Which would affect what?
The, the percentage that is applied against that. Because farmland is much less, uh, it has a, a much lower rate.
Sure.
Is that correct?
If, if we would classify, if, sorry, if you, if the board determines that the property is ag land, then we would need to classify it as ag land and then value it accordingly to, you know, the soil usage, whether it's crop or timber or whatever the case may be.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm searching for here, what I'm, I'm kind of at sea is...
Right.
How do we determine whether that's ag land or residential? What, what in the statutes gives us jurisdiction to, uh, you'll look at that issue? I, I do see we, I've got, I have not had an opportunity to look at this, uh...
There's a, a very clear attorney general's opinion that defines that. And that is actually presented here.
I'm confused. I looked at the, at your notice, your appeal. And the only, if, if, if our duty is to set valuation and there's no dispute as to valuation, we do not talk about taxes. So why would we be reviewing the classification? Because the, if the only reason for the classification, what affects the, the taxes is the classification, that's drawing us into something over which we have no jurisdiction.
It, it actually is a legal issue and it's actually something the assessor, I, we believe should follow the law. And in this case, they're not following the law. And so we're obviously appealing that decision. And we have the law in front of us, you know, that you actually have the right to look at this. We also have the law, the attorney general's opinion, that, that says what ag land is, how many acres it... Actually, there's no definition of acres, it's how the property is actually used. Oklahoma is a land use state. We must classify and determine properties by their use and what they're actually used for.
So when you went to the assessor, you told the assessor there was a misclassification and the assessor said, no, there is not?
Correct. And refused to listen to the arguments. We presented them with information, so we presented them with an FSA farm, agriculture number. We had documentation of this going to the assessor. We presented them, the assessor has the, the map. So we put the maps in our presentation. So we actually have a presentation for you if you'd like to listen about what this is.
Well, you know, my question, I don't think it matters. Just, I just really don't think it matters. As, as Thompson pointed out, we have an agreement as to valuation here. So even if it was determined one way or the other, we've already settled what the value of it is, which is what we do. But I don't know what we're going to do...
According to the, uh, the notice, and this was a case of, uh, in Brown versus City of Tulsa, I think you probably have that, and I'm asking for the, uh, attorney, the DA's office. But they probably have that case of where that, that actually went up forward. And that was the request of having three people here, because in that particular case, there was only two and it moved on to District Court. In this case, it probably might be better off to be remanded back and let them correct the issue. And so I actually think probably the best way is to remand it back and say, hey, guys, fix this issue. And that's a simple solution.
Well, because that would mean that we made the determination that what they did was wrong. And, and the issue is, do we have that authority?
I don't, I don't think we'd be saying they're wrong, we're just saying it needs to be reviewed yet.
He brought it up in front of them, that's what, that was my question. When you were there in front of them, did you say to them there's a mischaracterization?
We keep it...
And they said no?
So we, keep in mind that when we talked to them, we actually came down to the office and we talked. But we didn't really get a true informal hearing. Like, I've been through an informal hearing before. And so in the informal hearing, and this is where procedures really weren't followed very good, you know, it's an opinion. But we were told to audit this paperwork and other things. Of course, they had our schedule F, that we're actually truly farmers, because we, we farm land in western Oklahoma.
Okay.
Southwestern Oklahoma.
Tell me about this piece of property, that, it looked like it abuts up against a residential area. Tell me about this piece of property, it looked like it abuts up against a residential area.
No, well, actually, so this piece of property is, is actually right here. And so as you can see, that this area here, it's a little bit, I mean, the actual borders are a little lower here and maybe a little in here. So this is an oil pad, right here. And actually, right here is another fence line. And you can see it comes all the way over here like this.
Okay.
And so that is actually an easement. So by the, the corporation commission or, you know, filed on, on file and that. And so this has been cleared up. And actually, this is a fairly recent drawing, because we've cleared all the bushes and stuff from this area. So that you've actually got a good drawing up, or a good map up that has happened since we've owned the property. And so this here, and then the rest of this is all considered agriculture. So all classified agriculture. So if you take anything in the southwest quarter, southwest quarter over here, it's all agriculture. Over here is agriculture.
When did you buy this?
Two thousand twenty-one, November.
What, so what happened last year in January? It got changed to agriculture.
Without our knowledge.
It got changed. It got changed to agriculture.
So we, it was in agriculture and they switched it back.
And then they, after we, I don't think.
I still say your real issue is gonna be what ends up going to be your taxable rate. Isn't that your real issue? Cause otherwise, you can use it for whatever you wanna use it for. And if somebody comes out and tells you, say, hey, you can't, you can't farm here, that's not, it, it never comes up what's going on here. So is your real issue, when you get your tax assessment, whether you're taxed as residential or whether commercial or whether your tax is agriculture, is that the real issue?
The, yes, that is the issue, is the classification issue and what the land can actually be used for. Because most of this is a floodplain, the majority of this land.
But now, stop, that's what I'm trying to tell you, that we do not get involved in taxation issues. This is a taxation issue. We only get involved in fair market value. And the fair market value isn't gonna change regardless of whether this is gonna be residential or agriculture. The taxable value is gonna be affected by whether it is or is not. And that, we don't do taxes, that's my opinion.
But we do, according to the AG's opinion, we do classifications and.
You do do that.
I, you know what, I do not, I, I do not read that that way. I, I, it, the, the property, the propriety of these categories of use is not a matter reviewable by the County Board of Equalization. So.
Where do you see that?
This, this sentence right before she starts her pink.
Okay.
I am a lawyer, by the way. So I'm telling you.
Two of the three lawyers, I'm not.
No problem.
Statutory construction is something I'm extremely familiar with for fifty years. So, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at that statement and, and if, that's why I was asking you. The real issue here is not what somebody's gonna allow you to do on that land, but how you're gonna get taxed on that land, which we have no jurisdiction to determine. That's, that's my opinion, that's just my opinion.
And that's why I, I wanna seek legal representation for the board. You know, not, not acting, I mean, I'm a farmer too. I don't wanna act as a farmer in this case. I don't think you all wanna act as attorneys in this case either, even though you have great knowledge in your. We need, we need outside counsel recommending this interpretation. Who represents us?
Yeah.
I think that's fair thing for everybody at this point, including, including the landlord.
And Ms. Thompson's right, in that it says that.
And then it says however.
The propriety of use is not a matter reviewable by us. And then it turns around and says it's an essential function to hear the thing. So in other words, that's a contradictory sentence and it doesn't explain itself. I do need time to look at the statutes that have been cited in this opinion. And then I need to look at this as a matter of Daniel case. So, yeah, we're, we're gonna, I, we need some time, look.
So we have a motion on the floor to accept the valuation of the property. The, the owner says this is the valuation. Assessor says this is the valuation, they agree.
Right.
It's the next step that, that they're, it's the relief they're asking for is classification.
Right.
No, the relief they're asking for is value, they don't, they're not asking for relief. It's, we, they, we are appealing the assessor's valuation, which there is no appeal from FSA agree. What's left?
No, the classification is wrong. And so the, the classification changes the assessor's value, or it changes the taxable value on this property to what it's actually used for.
Okay.
Right.
We don't deal with taxation?
Yeah, we don't get the taxable value, but the use, it appears in this contradictory opinion here by, I don't know this person, I know most of the AGs.
So, and listen, just one, one point of thought. Does the DA's office represent the county assessor? So who are you?
A general counsel for the county assessor's office. I used to work for the DA's office.
I'm gonna ask the question again, does the DA's office represent the county assessor?
Yes, they can.
Okay.
They can, yeah.
Yeah, I can represent the county assessor as well, as general counsel.
And, and when we ask for a DA's opinion on, on this, the DA comes in not as a, a mouthpiece for either party. It's what's the law. It's pretty much like an attorney general, that's.
Okay, so in your opinion, who, where to listen to whom, the DA or you?
I'm telling you the assessor's position on the board's jurisdiction, I am not advising this board.
Yeah, I got you, I understand.
I just, I, I just wanted to.
We actually submitted an attorney general's opinion that you should actually have in documents ahead of time, that actually discusses the use value. And I'll highlight at one area, is the Oklahoma Supreme Court has determined that quoted language is adopted to protect land located in prime locations but used for agricultural purposes, from grossly inflated valuation through the proximity of metropolitan areas, industrial areas, highways, lakefront, locations or like.
Which has not occurred here, because you agreed to the valuation. That has not, that has not occurred here.
But this is agriculture land. And so determining agriculture is that.
Do you hear what you just read to me?
Yes.
It was to protect you against something that has not happened to you.
It has happened.
It has not.
It has, because it's classified wrong.
No, 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 if it had, you would not have agreed to the valuation. Did you, did you not read me that it was to protect against overvaluation?
Yes.
That's what, that's.
So the valuation, but it also says that it must be taxed according to use.
We don't deal with tax.
No, we deal with use though. And so this property is used, does not have a homeowner, doesn't have a tent, doesn't have any dwelling of any kind.
Okay.
And therefore is classified agriculture.
But the assessor classified it as what?
Can I ask you a question? Steve, right. If I have a hundred and sixty acres in Oklahoma County and it was farmland and then, or if I buy a hundred and sixty acres, it's farmland and I'm going to develop it at some point, at what point does it become residential? For when I start breaking it up and putting houses on it? When does it, when does it become, go from agriculture to commercial or to residential?
I'm gonna defer to Seth, he works for about fifty dollars a day. Is it Seth who works for the assessor?
I'm Seth, I work for the assessor's office as well. So that, up until this point, when that land would be changed to residential would be once they, they actually have filed the plans and have, are in the process of actually making it residential.
So on a single home, if I, if I did the same thing, I bought ten acres and it was farmland, why, what would cause it to change from agriculture to residential? When I don't even have a house on it and, and nothing changes, and nothing has changed within the use?
Obviously, any kind of transaction.
No, no, the answer is, if you look for an actual edition of farming, for agricultural use.
Okay.
No, that wasn't his question.
Well, I think it is, I think it's the answer to it.
Yeah. So what was, what was the answer you were giving?
Well, I, I mean, I was going to lead up to the point that any, any evidence that the land is being used for ag would be, would need to be supplied. If without that evidence, it would be changed to residential.
According to the agriculture definition, and this is according to the website of you guys, agriculture use includes production of crops, including cover crops, livestock or poultry. It can also include leaving land idle for government programs such as conservation reserve program or for crop or livestock rotation. Land used for raising certain animals to produce human food or other items of commercial value on agricultural land also qualifies. Using land for wildlife management is an agriculture use. Contact your local assessor for more details.
That is.
When did you buy this property?
Two thousand twenty-one.
And you purchased it for what?
Hundred and four.
Okay. All right, we haven't agreed on as to the value, did we? All right, yeah, have that.
We didn't get a second?
I will, I will second that because both parties agree.
Okay, that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, all in the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the value has been set. Now the question is, and we're gonna table this, because I need to look at all this law and make sure it's actually the law and still the law. And then we will come back and determine this. Can't do it by tomorrow, I mean, I might could, but I mean, I've got other things on my plate. When do we wanna set this, or well, we'll have to give no decision.
So, yeah, let's, let's take a vote on this.
We need a motion to table, and I'd, I'd also like to include that we ask the district attorney to provide us counsel.
Okay.
So let's, you could probably take those both together, so to, just a motion to.
Hold up, I'm, I'm a little annoyed. If, no, so I'm very serious about this. If you're speaking for the assessor, why didn't he change it?
Why didn't he let?
Why didn't he change it? If you're speaking for the assessor, why didn't he change it?
Change what?
The, the designation.
County assessor's office changed the designation when they purchased the property to residential. The reason they did that, because they saw no indication of bona fide agricultural use on that property. If you, will you throw up the area, please?
Right here.
That pad that you see was a prior oil well site.
Okay.
Unsuitable for farming. So the position of the county assessor's office was, that property is unsuitable for agricultural use, therefore it could not be ag. And the next available use category, because there are only three, would be residential. I don't think they want it as commercial. No, but we have to have it.
Can you, can you?
But you have cattle on it currently.
Yeah, we have cattle on it currently.
Well, I want, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
I want you to go to the map and use your finger and show me how much of that land is yours.
It said square.
So the land of ours, that is ours here, is actually right here on the square as outlined by the assessor. Or it's very close, I'm not gonna say it's perfect, but it's really close. This area right through here, if you'll notice, is on a FEMA floodplain.
Yeah.
So it can really only be used for agriculture. Because you can't build there, you can't put a house there.
What is the total acreage?
Thirteen point three.
Is there a current easement still on the pad?
This has not been released by the corporation commission and, and the assessor can go check that. So we have no right, if we put anything there, they can knock it down. We have no right to build there.
What that is, how much does that subtract from your acreage?
I don't know exactly, because they actually have an, an, a secondary fence that follows this line right here. That comes over like this and covers a lot more area than what you see in this pad. And so that's actually all within that, that boundary. So you can run cattle there, but you can't do anything else.
Okay. I'm done.
So, go ahead.
There's no evidence of any kind of ag being used on that property, there's no. Well, just because a cow crafts on the property doesn't mean it's ag.
Okay.
Livestock, rotation.
Yeah, but I say, but that's neighboring, that's your neighbor that has the livestock.
No, we have.
No, they are our livestock. We own cattle on that property.
Is it being used for profit?
Yes.
Okay, that, that wasn't told to us at the, during the informal.
We didn't get a.
We didn't get, we just got told no.
And I don't understand why it was agriculture on December twelfth. And no one notified us, but it changed.
And maybe this would be the, as I look at it now, because there's apparently evidence that the assessor didn't know about, it might be better to remand this back to the informal hearing in front of the assessor to determine the use of this property. Does that seem fair?
That seems fair.
I think this is up to these guys or the assessor.
Well, it's not up to them. We, we remand it back to them, they just have to make a decision.
Okay.
Okay, I.
I'm done.
All right, so I'm gonna move that we remand case, is it forty-one?
Yeah, BOE number forty-one.
BOE forty-one back to the assessor for a, for another or a first, however you wanted to find it, informal hearing.
On the use.
Of the use, not the value.
The agreement's already decided.
Is there a second? Hold on a minute.
Um, okay, I'll second.
All in the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I still, well, I'll talk, I can take something later.
I do, I actually provide an attorney general's opinion about the actual classification. I know this is kinda done, but we wanna make sure that that gets.
That is correct, yeah, so that is available in your package.
It's in our package.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do we still want to take a vote on requesting the DA's legal services?
Yeah, I do.
I, I, I do.
Okay, let's take a vote on that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the DA, just give the attorney general's opinion.
Um, I'm not sure how they'll reach out for that, um, cause, you know, this is a unique situation. But we'll find out, we'll make sure if we're at liberty to give that to them, so.
The law, you know what, the law is what somebody thinks it is. So when I read that, I didn't get what she said. So there's gonna be a finality involved when I guess it goes to the DA and the DA comes back and advises us. Y'all better be glad it's even here. I'm, I'm very serious, the, the DA, the assessor did what the assessor wanted to do. I do not believe we have the authority to change it. If the DA comes back and says you do have the authority to change it, then I'll decide if I want to.
All right. That's, we got, we, we haven't understood what we're gonna do here. Like I said, it may, this issue may resolve itself on remand back to the informal hearing. You've never done that before.
I've never, never seen this before.
So, no, no, I give you notice of when the hearing ends. They'll give you notice, you can show up in front of the assessor's office and argue till the cows come home.
And I just want you all to understand, I mean, I'm, I'm not angry at you guys, you, you did exactly what you had the right to do. But when you tell me I have to do something, I need to understand that I really have to do it. And I don't think I have to do it. I don't, I don't see the error of what the, what the assessor did and if there was, he's who you need to persuade, not us. I just don't think we have the authority. If you just keep telling me that my authority is limited to fair, fair market value, then I'm sticking to fair market value. I'm not gonna usurp somebody else's authority and go over and start talking about taxes. And that, I think, is all that's being affected by what you're asking. Cause nobody's gonna come out there and say, get them cows off that land.
This is much bigger case than just what you're asking for. This is something fundamental to the way this board is interacting with us.
Yeah.
Thank you, because, you know, when I look at this and, you know, I've done quite a bit of research on this, it's a legal issue, it really is.
Yeah.
And it's not a, about the classification. And it really has a lot to do with that because of the use.
Yes.
And the categorized use.
Yeah, and you realize there's a wall between us and the assessor's office. By statute, which we, we feel very strongly that there, it should be that way.
Yeah, we don't, we don't represent the assessor's office. Although the statutes require us to take whatever the valuation of the assessor. Although the statutes require us to take whatever the valuation of the assessor is on a piece of property unless there's sufficient evidence to overcome that presumption. Now, we don't have any guidance on what we consider for this. I need to look at what the law really is in this mixture of stuff because that contradictory statement in that opinion is written a little dis.
I asked for that AG's opinion that you gave us, or county.
Oh, it was a.
Somebody had to ask for it. You didn't have something to say he was going to.
Helen Arnold, Oklahoma House of Representatives on the table.
A representative that asked for it.
First of all, that, you know, January, cart rights. I mean, it's as old as the hill. That's why first, my first question is, Betty Hill, what's the impact of this on the law as it stands today? I don't know that. I've got to, I'll have to research it.
And I did find that the State Board of Equalization has much more authority than the county boards.
Now, I don't know whether that was to the attorney general's opinion to the state board or the county boards, but, you know, the one they presented there, the.
They talked about it.
Okay. But anyway.
So the assessor, just to make sure I understand here, the assessor's office will reach out to you all, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, they'll have to give notice of when they're going to decide.
Okay, okay. And then after that, if you want to appeal, you'll come back to us with that formal deal. So I guess for now, just wait until the assessor contacts you.
So when they come back?
They'll come back unless you guys still agree.
So if they switch it to agriculture, then we agree and we're all, we all go home. If it switches, if it stays residential or they, you know, it's basically that, then we have to go all the, we have to come back to here.
And then let the DA tell us that we have the authority to.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Glad to motion to adjourn.
You closed it here?
Yeah, I closed it here.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I look at we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.